First item up on the list here is our number two discussion regarding building code enforcement. And we just, we, council wanted to just take a look, kind of see where we're at and maybe get some input from the community. And I think the, one of the first ones that we want to hear from is probably Mike Olson. He runs a organization called Veritas. If you'll come up, Mike.
Can you say it back?
Right here.
So my name's Mike Olson. Everybody calls me Mo. I'm the Regional Director of Operations for Bureau Veritas. There is another company called Veritas, so you've got to separate the two. We, like I said, we're a third-party inspection company. We've been around since eighteen ninety, or eighteen twenty-eight. We cover the entire state of Texas, Florida, Georgia, Pennsylvania, and California. I don't go to any state but Texas. I don't go anywhere north or west Texas, and I just go all the way down to Del Rio. We've been doing it in Texas for probably the last thirty-five years. Started in the Metroplex with a company called Grand Marshall. Bureau Veritas bought them out. And we started working for municipalities that can't afford a full-time service of building inspections and plan review. We, in nineteen ninety-seven, the ICC, which is the codes that cities adopt and enforce, and so does the state, that came out with a building valuation table that says if you're building this type of structure, and it's classified as this, and it's this type of construction, whether it's sprinkled, non-sprinkled, concrete, wood frame, whatever, that they, they called that building valuation table. That's how everybody was getting their fees. That's how ICC charges. That's how most everybody charges is based off that footprint. We came into the market and figured everything out, and the, the number of people that we have and availability, and we charge sixty percent of that table. And that's for full service. We don't charge re-inspect fees. It goes from the time we get there. The, the way the process usually works with us, city has a contract with us. They come out and they send it to us digitally. We try to do everything digitally, just because it speeds the process up. You send it, permit comes into the city, y'all make sure that everything's there that's needed. They email it to us, we review it. Residential is usually three to five business days. Commercial is ten to fourteen business days. Commercial, on the commercial side, that's the first answer you get. I've been doing this almost thirty years, and I've never seen a commercial business pass the first time. That's just me doing it this long. Once we get all that done, and if there's comments that need to be, we don't go back and forth with the city. We go back and forth with the contractor that did that. To try to keep the city, y'all have enough stuff to do in the city, that on a day-to-day basis, we try to get all those problems resolved. Once it's resolved and fixed and meets the minimum standards of the code, we send it back to the city. The city comes in and says, hey, your permit's ready, this is your fee. They pay it, and then we let the contractor, he starts calling in his inspections. He doesn't have to come to the city, and then the city, it makes that city the third person. We still keep you informed. Within ten minutes of us doing an inspection, that contractor gets an email. He passed, he failed, he passed partial. If it failed, why it failed. At the very bottom of it, it has the inspector's phone number, their name, their license number. If y'all don't know, Texas is one of the, the only license you have to have in the state of Texas is a licensed plumbing inspector. Every one of our guys are licensed plumbing inspectors. If he has a problem, he can call them. He doesn't need to call the city and bug them, and then call, for y'all to call us. You call the inspector, our numbers aren't private. Currently, I have sixteen, is it sixteen? We have sixteen inspectors underneath what I say underneath my control. Brian Ellis is my area manager that lives here. Underneath him, there's eight. I have another area manager that lives outside of Lano, towards Fredericksburg, that covers my San Antonio group. There's eight inspectors down there. The good thing about us, you get your inspection to us by four o'clock today, you're guaranteed to have it tomorrow, between eight and five. Me and Brian, I've been doing this with BB for about three, three and a half years. I worked for the city of McGregor for almost twenty. So we try to tell our guys to, if you can start building at seven in the morning, then I can be there at seven in the morning to start inspecting. Our goal is get the inspections done in the morning. That way, they can go back. If there is a problem, fix it, call it back in by four, and we're right back out there the next day. We don't charge re-inspect going back and forth. That's up to the city. Whatever fee I give you, we'll provide you. Well, y'all have a contract with us already from twenty, February of twenty seventeen, if I remember correctly, but the calculator probably needs to be updated. We'll provide you with that. All you do is type in the square footage for a single-family residential, because the house will leak fifty-two, and tells you what the permit cost is. Commercial, it's based off the valuation. Type it in, it tells you what we're going to charge you for plan review. And that, the other good part on the residential side, we don't charge you for plan review. It's included in the cost, whatever it is. So fifteen hundred square foot home's going to cost you seven hundred eighty-five dollars. Turnkey, as many inspections as you want.
Any questions? Is there any? How many cities in the area utilize your services now, immediate area?
Immediate area, Waco, Bridgeville, Eddie, Marina, McGregor, Crawford, Gatesville, Bertram, Lano, Granite Shoals, Johnson City, Blanco, Gerald, Hamilton, Brady. Trying to think up, Brian, am I missing any that you think of? Rutherford, Flugerville, Creedmore. That's just this immediate area around Austin. But you, like I said, my area of coverage is from west of Del Rio. And I go from Brady to Corsica. So, and I've got inspectors pretty much all over, so we'd cover a pretty big area under.
Mike, one of the, I think one of the concerns there on that would be, since you guys cover a large area, the good services that I think our city has provided is still to get these inspections done with their building department very, very quickly. Same day, and you're talking with this large area that you're talking three to four?
No, three to four is the plan review.
Okay.
Inspection is next day.
Okay.
So if you called and you emailed in and said, hey, I need a frame grip at two fifty-two Jones Drive in Lampaces, it goes into our main database. We have permit techs in the Fort Worth area that handle all our inspections, if that's where the hub is. They send out an email at six o'clock at night, me and Brian look at it, and they're, every city in the Waco, Austin, San Antonio area that has the inspections that day, and we start plugging. This guy's going here, this guy's going here. Prime example, I've got a guy that probably tomorrow will go from here to Hamilton, to Whitney, to West, to Marina, and then back on. Everything's a circle. Our guys, it's, it's, they get paid whether they're there eight hours or whether they're two hours. It, it doesn't matter. The other thing is, is our fees just get passed on. There's an ordinance that I created to where you can adopt our fees for the building, and they just pass right on through to the contractor.
And that doesn't make any difference whether that's electrical, plumbing?
Doesn't matter what it is. Any, any inspection you need, we can go do the next day. The only time that we do same day, and Lampaces is a little different, and the reason I say that, I have four inspectors that live within twenty miles of this town. Three of them live, two of them live in it. So if it's an emergency gas, you know, it's cold out, somebody get a gas meter, we need to get it turned back on, that can be done. Y'all have an inspector in town that can also do those emergency things if need be. Electrical service upgrade, same thing.
What contracts do you currently have with us?
So, so we, we currently have a contract with y'all since twenty seventeen for building inspection and plan review services.
Residential?
Res, both, yeah.
How often do we use you?
Been here three and a half years, you've never used me.
Have you been sent to two thousand and seventeen? Is there a record of that?
Uh, when I look back in the, when I look back in our system trying to pull up Lampaces, because we have a, any, any time that, we have a system called TMS, and it, within that system, anything that's, that's ever done in a city is always recorded there for the lifetime. We don't ever kick it off, and I couldn't find anything on Lampaces, other than we had a contract.
And what's caused the contract?
Nothing. You don't, you don't pay for any part of the contract until you use it. And it's a case-by-case basis, whether it's commercial or residential. But those fees will come right up. I mean, she'll, whoever does it, I, I know Becky's been doing, she'll be able to type in, and if she has a problem, pick up the phone and call us. I mean, say, hey, this doesn't look right. Is this right? We'll pull it up on our, and say if everything matches and go.
What does the fee look like on a utility inspection, like a service upgrade?
So, a be, so because it's attached to the structure, House of the Lake Fifty-two says you can, you can't base it off the valuation, so we charge a hundred bucks to come do that.
And you can do that same day?
We can do that same day. Like, some, some gets ripped off, a tree knocks it off, you just got to call Brian or me and say, hey, can y'all get this done today? Soon as it's done, call us and we'll come out. After my, I had a review last week, and I've been told I need to hang around the house more, so. I ain't never had a boss tell me I need to hang around the house more, so. You'll have an inspector around this area pretty much twenty-four seven, even on the weekends if need be.
So, do you do this online, Mike, or do you do it on a call basis?
So.
How does, how does contractor deal with Veritas?
So, the, the way a contractor deals with us is basically inspection side. My goal, or my plan and my, my system that I've done for the past three years is, they need to come see the city three times. The time they drop their permit off, the time they pay you for that permit, and the time that they give you your CO. If you need a CO, and you only really need a CO for residential, I mean, for commercial. You don't need it for residential. It's a single-family home. So, the whole process is, is once the city has been satisfied and has been paying their fee, then we'll start, allow them to call in inspections. Until they pay you, they can't do inspection. We won't do it. That's our key, that you've gotten your money, therefore, we're going to get our money, and then we can just start the inspection thing. So they'll interact with us directly. They'll shoot an email, I need a T-pole. We get it by four tomorrow morning, or tonight, by seven o'clock. Brian usually has the schedule out. He goes out and says, okay, Abel, you're going here, or I'm going to go here. They go do it. Then we send a report to the contractor. In ten minutes, at four o'clock that day, whoever is on our list will get a list of every inspection we've done that day for this city. But the city also has access to that, that system. They can see everything that's ever been done in Lampaces. When the inspection was done, who did it, what failed, why it failed, any comments with the plan review, y'all with that. So that they're not blindsided. We, we pretty much wide-open book when it comes to that part of it.
So do you not do a CO for residential?
Ninety-nine percent of the cities in Texas do not do one for residential. They do a certificate of completion, because a contractor's actually pulling that permit to build the structure. They're not the final occupant of that. Your CO, like on your commercial side, goes with whoever's occupied that business. It doesn't go with who built the business. It's who, they get a certificate of completion, so that's what you can get with a residential structure. It's that, it's been completed, so, and that, a lot of times, is what banks want to see, that it's done that completion in that day. They've got that letter. So we do provide that for you.
What do you, for just new construction?
Nope. We'll do new, old, remodels, add-ons. If it can be built, we can look at. The only thing we don't do is have, chapter seventeen of the code is called special inspections. That's your concrete testing for slumps, your density testing for street, city streets, stuff like that. We don't do that kind of stuff. Red iron, there's special weld inspections, we don't do those. Those are called special inspections out of chapter seventeen. And most of the time, when it comes to that, the engineer's going to call for a third party to do those anyway, but it just won't be us. Your concrete, asphalt, we'll, around here, Langerman Foster, they'll do them. There used to be one in Colleen called Tetco, I just, but that's on the public work side, and we still do that side too. So our, our services cover everything, not just building. We've got engineering, planning and zoning, fire, you name it, we've got it pretty much.
Yes? One, I guess one more question is life safety type inspections. Is there anything on that, AD?
So, life.
Exactly, or I'm just, I guess I'm just asking, is that in your scope?
Yes, life safety, so that's, so any inspector that's out there, that's the main thing they should be looking for. I mean, there are some, you're looking at code stuff, but you've got to remember, the codes that are adopted by any city, or even the state, which is under twenty fifteen, are the minimum basic standards. That's the minimum. So if they go better than that code, okay, that's good. But our main thing is life safety issues. One of the biggest issues you get is people, like a service upgrade, you know, they're, they're putting a new service on the side of their house. Well, they think that's what stops. Now you got to go in the house, because now you got to put smoke alarms in there, because you've touched that electrical system. Well, what happens if you, you have gas? Well, now you need to put a dual combination smoke carbon monoxide detector in there too. Those are life safety issues that they have to do. The code requires it. Once you touch that electrical circuit, you have to do it. Plumbing, there's some, you start touching the plumbing side, there's not a lot left, there's not a lot in there to upgrade. The plumbing codes haven't changed, what, ten years? The very minimum. Your basic one that changes life safety-wise is your electrical. It changes every three years. Prime example, how many of y'all have islands in your houses? Pretty much everybody nowadays has an island. You got plugs on the side of it, right? Twenty twenty-three code, you don't have to have any plugs on there. You have to make it accessible so they can, if they want to add it, but you don't have to have it. In the twenty-one code, or the twenty-twenty code, you had to measure the square footage of that top, and every nine square foot, you had to have a plug. Well, that, some of these islands are pretty big. That's a lot. Twenty seventeen, you had to have one plug on the side of it, minimum. So it changes all the time, and that's, that's why we continue to have our guys continue education, trying to understand that. It's a lot.
All right, any, anything else? You guys good? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Eric, do you have anything for us, when a contractor walks into city hall, and, and I might address you too, Becky. I, I think council just needs to, what I'm trying to do is get us, or we understand, when somebody has a project and they're going to build it, what is that actual process, when somebody comes in, and how efficiently can we take? I mean, and when I look at it, when I look at a contractor coming in, I look at it as a, I mean, this is a customer. And how are we going to take care of this customer and make it the best experience it can be? Not all times it's, it's a good experience, but can you guys talk about that a little bit?
Yes, Sarah, I'll look for your questions to that game, Frank.
Okay.
Walk you through the processes with that. To be honest, it's a really difficult scope of the project, whether it's residential or commercial. Then normally we'll do discussions upfront first, and want to know if they need, if it's commercial, because they go with third-party review. If it's residential, and I have a question about kind of what the project is, I'll send plans over to Bart, to Frank, and look over it and review, and see what the sort of that project is, if I need more additional data. I refer them to the MyGovernment portal. They go in there, load all their documents in there, review those documents, look over them. We go ahead and issue it, see what's it paid for, and then it's actually going to wait some of those inspections to the last access report. And normally with the commercial, when it's enough of a third-party review, they normally have a twelve-month nature around time. Residential, normally you can do, depending on the scope, you know, a couple of days, just depending on what all's involved. For houses, they're pretty simplistic, unless it's somewhere that's a new subdivision, I won't go out and go look, and do a site visit. Normally, it's pretty clear.
Becky, if council decided to do this route, what would that do to the fees for the contractors?
Well, we definitely have to look at it, because like you mentioned, for a hundred dollars, our residential remodel, just simple, just a residential, is thirty-five dollars. The commercial remodel, the upgrade for the electric, is fifty. So if we add in any bases, or if we add any additional services, and plus that would change. But just for the electrical upgrade, it's going to be a little different in price. But again, our prices haven't been updated in quite a while, so I'm sure we're pretty low in comparison to. Yes, that would definitely be looked at, because all of our just remodels, if you will, like if they're doing a upgrade, it's a new store, it must be worth thirty-five dollars.
What's the biggest hurdle, what's the biggest, most common issues you see that could be worked out with a, with a rule, or, or something, make it easier, more manageable for the contractor, more manageable for you, our staff?
I mean, there's always going to be hurdles, depending on the complexity of their, of their project. I mean, but I think we work really hands-on. I mean, as far as, you know, all the three committees we have, redevelopment meetings we have, reconstruction meetings, onsite meetings, I mean, we, they have so much information, and I don't know where we can improve other than just making sure that we're consistent in our delivery, you know? But I, I think we do a good job of educating and finding my direction, and I get calls all the time, walking into MyGive, how to handle it, adding new inspections, or adding additional inspections if there's some that are missing. I came on the fly, just add additional inspections in there, so I mean, we're pretty.
Is there any, is there any question from anybody in the audience, contractors?
What, what is the city looking for here? Of course, I know Mo and Brian, and really half, half of the guys that work there, but what, what are we looking at? What, what's the city looking at?
You know, I think, I think what the council's looking at is just making this process just as thorough and, and easy, and just a real fluid process that we are, and I think it's just, you know, I think it's important that we review these processes from time to time. So, and you guys, as the contractors that are doing this day in and day out, you're going to have more input than any of the council up here that's maybe Eric, he might have some good input. Just how we can improve and how we can do better is what we're looking for.
Well, I know for my, just myself personally, and just my opinion, I mean, I've never, never had a problem with, with Frank or Bart either one, on how they do it, their accessibility, their accessibility is second to none, in, in my opinion. Everything's pretty fluid on that end. I would just say the best thing that can be done for either one of them would just be the, the backing of the, the council and the upper part of city hall. That's my two cents.
I can only speak for myself. I've never had any issue with the way things work in the city. You take a set of plans in there, a couple of days, it's smooth. I'll just echo what Chris had to say about Frank and Bart. Couldn't ask for two better people. I mean, you got, I mean, Bart's new in the job, but you ask him a question, if he doesn't know it, he digs into it, and within days, sometimes hours, he will give you the answer that you need, not the one you want, the one you need to know. And as far as accessibility, I can only speak from my experience with third-party inspectors, and I, I don't know, we'd be well enough to speak on them, but it happened to me in several cities, it's third-party. They're, they're probably invested in our community as, for the most part. As someone who lives here, I know he's got inspectors that live here, and that's fine, but my experience has not been a blessing going through third parties. I'd much rather deal with people that deal with it from day to day. And you take something in, and you get an answer quick enough, at least it's quick enough for me. And accessibility to our inspector, that's Chris was saying, or I, I'll put him up against anybody as far as accessibility. And we've had some, I wouldn't say knock-me-out dragouts, but being able to work through those issues, you know, we're just going to have to agree to disagree for a couple of days, and you come back and sit down and work it out. Again, I can't speak high enough, give enough praise to the people that are actually involved in the day-to-day, at least my experience. And I've had probably, in the last five years, I've probably had, I don't know, maybe a thousand inspections done in our community. And so, no bad experiences from this.
Herb, I might have a little bit of unique perspective. I'll echo what everybody else has said here. And Frank and Bart have had zero problems with accessibility, none whatsoever. Couldn't complain one lick. We also use, your word, we also have inspections through BB on some jobs that we're doing, in support of some water companies and so forth. And these guys have been stellar on that front as well. So I think from that perspective, Mike's friend, I, you know, I do want to say that that service and their dedication to getting the job done when we needed, kind of been, been great. But so has, so has Bart, so has Frank. I can't complain about any of it. I would think that if I had anything that I would like to see done better, it would be, from my perspective again, just coming off this building, some very specific written regulations or codes through the city, so that you know exactly what you're getting into before you get down to the road. That would be where I see a bottleneck here.
Thank you.
All right, I'll agree with Mr. Tommy. I use, you know, because I'm speaking as a citizen here. I am building the state of Lampaces. Frank has always been exceptional. Always answer the phone. If he doesn't, calls you back very quickly, gets inspections done real quick. I also use Bureau Veritas on any, on everything outside of the city of Lampaces. I mean, they've always been great for us as well, so. Kind of wondering, you know, what route are we trying to look at? Are we trying to create space for our building official, or, or create time for a building official, or what, kind of what's the goal, or what are we, what are we trying to do?
Well, I think, I think just the planning process of, you know, we've got, you know, potentially three or four subdivisions coming in Lampaces in the next, probably two to five years, or a year from now to five years from now, and it's going to be busy. And I just want to make sure we're ahead of the game and don't, I'm stung. So I think that's the, I think that's the main goal, is make sure we have this process figured out, and where we all are in it.
I think one of the best things I'd add is, is a separation of your building, of your building official. It doesn't have to be a full-blown developmental services, but it could go that way and could grow into that eventually. But there definitely needs to be some separation in that, between that and city hall, so.
Frank, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to add that, uh, everybody here, right? I'd just like to add, I think the thing that we bring to the table, being an analysis inspection department, is the ability to give a consultation and return multiple times to a jump site to complete a project when somebody's in a bind. If they have a situation where they have concrete coming, and they're trying to get something fixed before they can get their inspection, or they're missing something, and if we have time, we, we go out there and make multiple attempts to pass them through that inspection. So we've never charged for re-inspection fees ourselves, never charged for consultations. Don't really believe in, in that stuff, but I'm always willing to look at improving the process, however it may be.
Do you feel like it would free up some of your time if we had, if we had a third-party company in place, or what do you think on that?
Well, I have mixed opinion about it. I'd need to research a little bit more. The, if a third-party comes in and fails something, and there becomes a disagreement between a contractor or a builder, and then I have to get involved in that disagreement, then it really hadn't accomplished anything. But really don't want to run a mediation service, but I wouldn't mind having some more help. But I think kind of researching the idea of how we're going to, you know, approach this group that we have to, it's, it's, it's coming. That's all there is to it. A third-party's an option, DSO's an option. There's several of them. I think it's a good, healthy discussion we all have, and start to take into consideration.
Let me ask you, what, say we have three subdivisions going at one time, what's going to help you the most? To be the most efficient?
That's, that's a great question, except it just can't be answered as simple as, as, as we take the answer here today. It's just, as Mr. Olson was speaking of earlier, you know, just like the code analysis in the front of a plan that's going to tell you the building type, occupancy, AV protected, I mean, it's, it's, it's so many different things to that. I mean, depends on the size of the subdivision, the engineering involved, the houses, the zoning for it, all these things go into that. So, you know, So, you know, it's, it's a complicated question. Every project's gonna be handled differently, you know? I mean, a mid-gas inspection for a hospital is gonna be a lot different than somebody's, you know, room edition, you know? But you have to take that into consideration and the ability that I have now to meet somebody on, onsite and preface that with them and talk to them about the protocol of the inspections, but it's not just the inspection, it's, it's also the customer service aspect of it as well.
Those who may not know, Frank, uh, how many right now do we have inspections that work with the city?
I'm doing, uh, all the commercial and residential fall plumbing. Uh, Mike Claire's helping out with, uh, any of the unlicensed trades in the civil inspections. So, be hidden myself occasionally. I'm in good communication with, uh, Mike Key or Kay Morris in the electric department to help me out if we have a service, uh, situation where I'm tied up, and they can take a look at the service, you know? It's kind of a all-hands-on-that sort of thing some days, and, you know, Bart and I depend on each other because it's a small apartment as well. Thank you.
Let's move on to item number three, discussion regarding municipal pavilion, Eric Cooper, Frank, and Eric Bart.
Mayor and Council, um, South was approached, I don't know, a week and a half ago by Vision Landpasses. They are currently renting three storage facilities, or a couple of storage facilities across town that are getting kind of full with their supplies. Uh, so Miss Luntzer from CHSA about the possibility of leasing a portion of land adjacent to Cooper Springs National Park where this pavilion is currently existing. Uh, the hope that when they lease the property, they can remove the existing pavilion, expand the pad that's there, install a metal storage building, tie into the existing utilities. Vision will carry insurance on the property, uh, pay for the utilities. The city would just be responsible for maintaining around, around that. CHSA, we don't really have any issues with that at all. We'd love to, to partner with Vision on that. Um, and Miss Luntzer and Ms. Crowe up here, if you guys have any questions for them. But I really just wanted to get the, to the council on that before we draft a lease.
Question. What else has been discussed?
This was the only side that, well, uh, Miss Luntzer did look at a few different locations across town, I believe, by the soccer fields.
The reason I asked is, I was thinking there's a lot of room for it.
I think they were looking for a, like a centralized spot close to where their events are, office where it's a hub.
Well, we've been contemplating needing storage for quite some time, and we use, uh, we have events, seven events, they start in August and go through February. The rest of the time, we just need storage, but we have a lot of stuff. And because we, um, have had smaller units, we've tried to cram what we have in. So, uh, Chris Iker, we talked to him a little bit maybe last year, and we talked to Finley, and they told us maybe they could find a place that was not being used by the city that might work for us. And so we looked at the barn, the, the barn where most of our equipment and stuff is kept for, I don't care why, but Christmas on the creek. And so we have looked at a few. We, I guess we've talked about different kinds of ideas. We're not a wealthy group, but we have tons of, tons of things, and we have a lot of money invested in paints and whatnots of every, everything for each one of those, uh, events. So, um, talked to Finley, um, it's been a weekend after go maybe, and Chris had recommended that this pavilion, they call it a pavilion, might have, might work for us. It's been there quite a while, it hasn't been used, uh, it has fencing around it, uh, it has the foundation, which is great for us. It's not gonna be quite large enough, but our plan is maybe to enlarge it. We know what our responsibility will be, uh, we'll do the materials and, uh, the labor for it. And we'll also, we also want to put lighting in it. We've never had a storage unit that has lighting, so when we finish our events at eight, nine, ten o'clock at night, we never have any light, which is dangerous, uh, I think. So, we looked at it, we, several of us went by, walked it off, and it's very close to, like Erin says, very close to the majority of things that happen with, with those activities, so, um, we're interested, we wanna collaborate with the city if it looks like it would be something that you guys would be interested in. I understand it hasn't been used in quite a while, and so it's, it's to me like it might be, might be a good fit for us. If y'all got any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Is that being used since the last one year ago?
It's currently being used for just a brief period for storage, uh, for the construction on, I believe, but, uh, no, we, the city hasn't utilized it since, I don't know when the last barbecue kickoff was, but it's held out there years ago.
And I think we own all the way to northern town, right? Frank, do you know?
Yes.
We own all the way to northern uptown, so we own that whole street again. This doesn't seem feasible, or, or to rent this land, put a storage facility right in the middle of a three-block lot, we get it ourselves from the city, get it off our hands, make it used for something, but Jones has come out of 580, we have to go back to the golf course parking lot, because that parking lot's in the pool. Just this in the middle of a three-block, this doesn't make sense to me.
I think it makes sense because it's not being, I think it makes sense because it's not being used.
And if we sell the property, then there's a building.
I don't think we'd rent it, so.
Why wouldn't we? The building, you don't need any more property.
The reason I originally proposed this location is because there's already a utility pole there, there's already water there, all, they just need to rehang the transformer and we've got power. It's easily expandable, so, and it, again, it hasn't been utilized in at least five years. We don't use it for anything since the last barbecue kickoff was there.
Two miles on those, let's put it at a five-inch switchboard.
Problem with 580 for us...
The idea is that you have all that out there.
We do, but the problem with 580 for us is, that thing's gonna grow. It's gonna get bigger, it's gonna get better, and this, we're talking about a pretty good footprint here, and we're gonna have to...
Which is what we're gonna do.
That's thirty by...
It's thirty by thirty right now.
No, it's twenty-one-nine by twenty-one-nine. We want it thirty.
We want it thirty by thirty.
We want it thirty, the floor's face, thirty by thirty. And we do understand that if Vision should shut down, collapse, or otherwise implode, because we, we have too many things going on. We do understand that the pavilion would belong to the city, so it's not like we know what that responsibility would be. But I can't, I really can't speak to whether or not it's ever gonna be sold. I don't, I don't know.
It has, it has, it has to be.
It has to be, it's not.
What is, what is this doing?
I don't know, but I do not, there, it's a... It would, if not something single-family or residential.
Chris, um, on this piece of property, was this part of the donation that came with this Cooper Springs donation, or, like, some of the donate, like?
This was not, this was real, real property.
It was real, real property that the city acquired?
Yes.
Have you had a monitor pulled up, tagged with, and everything? Or did it go to the city?
Tagged very nicely.
Tagged very nicely.
How about it?
This whole area is ours.
Correct.
Put a, put a thirty by thirty right in the middle of three pieces of property makes zero sense to me at all. I mean, we can sell that to a developer, put that money into our coffins, and do some things. I mean, wouldn't you agree that a thirty, a thirty right in the middle of that is...
It's already not almost a thirty by thirty, right? And we don't have any plan to sell it.
Well, that's a guy that think about, so are we gonna get in the business of real estate? That's why I think we should sell that whole street, get out of the business. We should own this, we should own as little amount of real estate as possible. Well, if you guys are gonna use it for storage, that's long-term, short-term, it's gonna benefit you guys. I mean, even if you did sell that six months, two years, whatever, find another spot. Put the investment in there over there to happen.
Excuse me?
So I think we all put the investment in there, not just a turn, and then I'll bring a lot of return with you, you know, absolute kind of...
And the other thing too, though, I mean, this, it seems like with, with the way that Campbell Park rose and the way that all that stuff in there, we obviously have parking, that would be, I mean, it's why I do it to Cooper, it's why I do it to Campbell. It gets easily, it gives us parking with all that area. We never have that parking when we have events out there. And if that's gonna get better, obviously there'd be reasons for the city to sell something that just to, just because we have access to land, why would we sell it? And then that other things there, so it would help, it would help Vision. And so, I mean, years down the road, if you wanna sell it years down the road, then Vision could go somewhere else, and in the meantime, it's kind of like a win-win.
I'll go to those parts now. I mean, it's, it's...
Because we haven't talked about selling it until what you just brought up.
We haven't talked about using it, just don't know either.
No, but, but they said, you said they're...
I think it's definitely a discussion. It's interim, sorry. So I think it's, it's definitely a discussion we, not we can decision on it. I think it is, I'm...
Uh, we can look at alternative locations to the city, if there's anything else that exists.
Can we find something, or we even look at alternate locations? There's alternate pieces of property in Central and that passes to the current home that wouldn't be as big as this, right? Want to have some thought here?
I don't really know. We've looked at multiple locations within the parks, and it really doesn't make any sense in the parks, to take up that much real estate for something that we know is gonna grow and expand. Now, I don't know if we've got something outside of the park area, but within the parks, it doesn't make sense.
There is no action I'd want as much.
But, but I will search for some alternate locations with consideration as well.
Just so you know, the footprint's already there. So we're looking at, I mean, so you're not creating any, the footprint's already there, so, uh, even if it's listed for sale, someone would have a thirty by thirty building on the label, because, I mean, there it has slab, there it has structure, I mean, it only add value if you're working on selling it. And it means, I think, you definitely use the storage versus anywhere else, I think, you have, have a footprint, you have to, yeah. And I don't, you, first of all, you use, I don't own any place, I don't even know if that industrial area over there, that way, because you have a crush on marbles. I don't think it's up on there, or...
If they were, it wouldn't be something I would suggest. And the reason, one of the biggest reasons is, like, to be brought up, it's, that's pretty centralized to what they do.
Right. Well, and, and we were talking about City Zone and, and over there, it's not like that storage, it's nice business.
Yeah.
It's already there. And if there's three blocks there, if we, if we even discuss it, I think it's good. I, I, I think the amount of vision contributes to the city, I think is good. I, I am not disagreeing that what they bring to the city is phenomenal, though. I know you guys do a great job, uh, I'm just, if, if there's alternate areas instead of right in the middle of the three-block areas. I understand that the pad is ninety-five percent built, but if you had to tear down the shelter, put a new in, and, and, Chris put a hot hole up and done. If there's other alternate, we, we, we pull it to ourselves if there's an alternative position. Well, I think what they were looking at too on this announcement was, you know, this is gonna be the most, least costly and, uh, probably one of the best locations that where you guys work, if we're exactly where it's at.
Selfish reasons, yes. We had, we had it spread all over, all over town, and it's very difficult to, to manage it. We understand, and when we went to talk with Erin about it, we had a great discussion. If there's alternatives, we don't need it tomorrow, but she asked me what my timeframe was, and I said yesterday, because we really, uh, we have a lot. Lot of moving parts, Chris knows something, his group, they're fabulous when we do Christmas on the creek.
Looks like there's others or not?
I appreciate it very much, and, um, Erin and I'll be talking, and you guys have any better ideas for us or Charles? Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Discussion regarding any items on the regular agenda. And there is none. And we will go into our regular session, we'll call the regular session order, all rise.
Let us pray. Dear Father, couldn't be more grateful for you in this great place, and thank you to enjoy some of my communication, make some good decisions, with pleasure in talking to you, to respond to your prayers, what you desire. As always, Lord, we ask that you be with us in safety, watch over us, make decisions, give us our sins, till we can be in it, always your name, again. Don't forget to bless.
What allegiance do you defy are the United States of America, due to Republic of the St. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
All right, we're going to our citizens' combat, any citizens required to address city council on matter not included on the agenda at this time, city council may not liberate, allow you to present or not to read this again either. And there is none. One point two, citizens' combat, any citizens required to address city council on matter that is included on the agenda at this time. And there is none. Discussion possible action regarding approval minutes of the regular meeting held on January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. I don't see corrections when we had approval minutes. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda, discussion possible action regarding December twenty twenty-four, and that's what the court. We go root and see what's going on. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Orange and the park report. And there is none.
Mayor and Council, the Landpasses County Water Control Improvement District of the Water will be holding a Sulfur Creek Flood Control Seminar on Monday, February third, from six a.m. at Old Middle School Cafeteria. We'll be giving, uh, history of point control dams in the area, their benefits to the city, and possible future needs for, for real situation matters. Um, the region G Water Plan staff recently submitted water strategies for the twenty twenty-six Water Plan, outlining current contracts, current studies, and possible future projects for consideration. Familiar with water development board funding, you have active strategies in place to pursue any options for water development board, so that's, that's good. Tomorrow and Wednesday, I will be in Austin for the Water for Texas Conference, um, in downtown. The, the agenda has a wide variety of topics, some creative water, groundwater, uh, service water, all, all things water for the next two days, so it's a convenient conference. And just a reminder... And just a reminder to pick up your election packets, or talk to folks that might be interested in running and the deadline to file for that is February fourteenth.
Seven point one, discussion and possible action concerning the approval of contract for the electric service between Landpasses County, Texas and the city of Landpasses, Texas for May third, twenty twenty-five, in the whole election.
Good evening, Mayor Council, this is the second piece of the start of the election. Um, like the last meeting, we went ahead and did a joint agreement with the State District and now we do it with the county. And Mr. Bishop has agreed to host the election again this year. And we have budgeted ten thousand dollars for this. And we're estimating it costs about three nine hundred dollars, so we do have the budget many already set aside for this project, you know. But I do need to get some more people to run and to apply. And we have the three quarters to this deadline, and it's about season. And see if any should I do a package on that. But so this evening, I'm just asking for approval to go ahead and, for contract for electric services between Landpasses County and the city of Landpasses.
Move the group contract for election services between Landpasses County and the city of Landpasses, Texas for my third duty to draw general election authorization and your ex due in layup. Second. Any discussion, questions?
I have a question. So what, what happens if a, if the seat goes unbilled or un, nobody applies? Like if, if the seats left grand open?
Then we would have to assess the meaning of the, of the other way.
So we just do the election as normal and then new cast come in and appoint someone afterwards?
I don't think so, yes.
Sorry, I just was curious about it.
And if we get closer to that, of course, we'll have all that figured out, we just do a, or but yes, that's, that's, that's
Any other questions? All in favor? All right.
Thank you.
Discuss and consider nominating candidate for the election of the Central Texas Water Supply Corporation Board of Directors.
Mayor Council, each year you're asked to consider the appointment of a city representative to Central Texas Water Corporation Board of Directors. Previous council has approved a resolution appointing the city manager as the representative. CM act of laziness facing board meetings and activities. I'm certainly willing to serve on that board of directors should this council choose to implement.
Move the group resolution appointment of Mayor Philwell to the Central Texas Water Supply Corporation Board of Directors. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Seven point three, discussion and possible action regarding purchase of two John Deere motors in the amount twenty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and four cents for the Parks and Recreation Board.
Uh, Mayor Council, during this year's budget process, the council approved ten thousand dollars for the purchase of motor for Parks Park. Another ten thousand for the purchase of motor for support facilities. We got these folks back in late April, early May, and they, they quoted around ten thousand dollar a piece. When it came time to purchase them, they gone up to, we only thirteen thousand. So we are a little over six thousand dollars over budget, but we can make that up in a couple of months, very easy.
Move the group purchase to the, on the, on the six thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Second. Any discussion?
You need to explain how we're gonna make this.
Sorry?
You need to explain how we're gonna make this.
Yes, we'll, uh,
How are we gonna make it over?
We've already got some savings. Uh, we didn't purchase a trout for Stockton Creek this year. We're gonna do away with one movie in the park and then we're gonna save some money in technical, in technical about doing one treatment in Sulfur Creek. And we'll have savings in other places too, but I know we can save money in nowhere.
I've heard that overall budget or
No.
Awesome quality service for our horse farm.
Sure.
Thank you.
How much is the cost to do the trout stock?
About this year, it'll be two thousand dollars.
There may be opportunities if council wishes to do that, and I'm not sure whether you're ready to do that, but it will pass.
Go ahead. Did you catch all the trout from last year's stock?
Over here.
Have that medicine thing goes here now and
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Seven point four, discussion and consideration of the approval of the second reading resolution for Landpasses Economic Development Project related to a life safety grant for improvements made to an existing commercial building located at Fort Kent East third street.
Mayor Council, this is the second reading of a resolution to approve a life safety grant for D and T investments for the Landpasses EDC, the first reading of our last meeting.
We're making motion to approve the second reading of resolution for Landpasses Economic Development Corporation Life Safety Grant. The amount of twenty thousand dollars for D and D investments.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion and consideration of possible action regarding a close change order for the roof of Hostess House renovation and addition.
Mayor Council, this evening you're being asked to consider a change order to the Hostess House to address roofing issue. Currently being built into the bid as group by council is the new facility for the new addition. After getting a better look at it, the contractor has recommended a new roof on the entire building due to the roofing materials that were used on the old portion of the building. If we do not replace the old roof of this time, be warranted on the new roof for the new addition. Only be warranted for five to six years. If we replace the entire roof, it would be a twenty year warranty. Staff does not necessarily recommend re-roofing the entire facility at this time due to some other regulatory concerns with the Hostess House renovation. And I just, if this does not get approved tonight and we stick to the original bid amount, we need to make sure to make a conscious effort to look at this roof in upcoming years or several places.
Would you have any reasons as to why the new roof, it'll be warranted for four or five years? It has nothing to do with all the, the, that it's attached to here?
Different materials, currently different pitch. The existing roof on the old building, the way I was explaining it, is basically wall material. Chummed with, so it's faster, so it's just proven, um, subject to leaking. Not, not what we use for construction standards.
And we did base on what we lived in this building, because that's the place it was, and apparently they did not do it. Architecture firm did. You have to make sure, I had somebody that's
So, so you'll recall that the original bids for the Hostess House remodel came in very high. And at that time, the project was value engineered. Not everybody's favorite word, but it was value engineered to reduce the cost with reduced scopes related to the project. So it may be, and I did not find this out for certain, but it may be that the roof was removed during that value engineering portion.
Back to Charlie's statement, they're gonna use different material to repair it for the nine thousand dollars as opposed to different material used for the three thousand? Is that my understanding right?
Well, the material that's being used for the nine thousand dollar addition is not the same material that is used on the old roof.
So that's what, is this, this just for the addition?
This is just for the addition. And it was built into the two point one two million dollar roof they constructed for the, the nine thousand for the addition. They, of course, the recommendation is to increase that amount by forty-three thousand if you have the whole thing on it. So there's certainly two different ways that the council can look at it. We're, we're this far invested, you've got this much money in it already, and you've got a pretty significant investment underneath that roof. Does it make sense to go ahead and do the roof at this time and protect that investment that's underneath that forty-three thousand dollar roof? Or do we make a mental note that in four or five years, we need to include this in our budget to do the entire roof? Because it sounds like it's a matter of time before it's made.
Frank, do you have an opinion in our building district for the city of Landpasses? Uh, do you have an opinion here, one way or the other?
Want me to air it here?
Yeah. I mean, we, we know that if we put this off another day, it's a lot more expensive. Tomorrow's always more expensive.
And we're gonna say, warranty goes down for the
This is the warranty. But where does it stop? I mean, the increases, where does it stop? So yes, Frank, I would like to hear.
We're already looking at the next item, right?
I think that it could have been approached in a different manner. We should probably let a partial demolition or exploratory demolition just as structurally the soundness of the structure be able to
Could have been different, Frank, what do you think about the roof?
Yeah, what about the roof, sir? Would you, would you do your nine, nine thousand or would you do the forty-three or forty? Well, it's not gonna get any cheaper the longer you wait, and then you're gonna incur the damage. Or the possibility of, of the damage. And you're aware of it at this point in time, it's the same decision you'd make if you were gonna put a new solar panel and inch it three hundred thousand dollars on it just for building. Yeah, decide what commitment you have to it.
I mean it, you sure don't have it. I think there's a lot of us who think it's gonna be different, or we can't, not change this thing.
Is the roof that bad on the old building? Have you personally looked at it from, from your building inspector position?
I moved in on the roof itself before we started this project, I did a two-page assessment of the building.
And the roof is
The old building needs some levels.
Sure, we, we, we know that, but in your professional opinion, the roof needs to be replaced?
Yes.
And I think the line should have made a top that?
Definitely.
Certainly.
And then, but then on this forty-three thousand dollars, is that like, do we have to go with this for this company? Or would we be better off getting bids for any roof?
I think if we do that at this, I think that will ultimately cost more because what we'll have to do in this case is go ahead and do the, the new addition. And then we're gonna have to go with it out once the reconstruction is done and replace the whole thing. So we're gonna re-roof the new addition.
Is it possible to, for the next few weeks, make this in the next council meeting, add this, uh, studies and material? I think hopefully the proper maybe architect here at that thing or
I don't know
Are we having this with the wall tonight on this?
Not, they do obviously want an answer quickly. I don't know when in their timeline they have planned to start the roof. I can email the person one morning.
And the only reason I ask typically, um, in my background, it's not necessarily the roofer that gives the warranty. It's the roof company, uh, that markets this stuff. I don't know what, what company that roof is using that, I think so. Actually, didn't have a couple of different opinions here. I don't know, those are, those are just some of my thoughts that come out of it, before you finger.
I definitely feel like it's something that the line should have thought, but we're past that point, we didn't catch it. The way I'm sure that they're probably at a point where they need an answer of what we're gonna do. I'd like to talk to them. And the point was maybe we'll go, the materials are just, we could even work since it, we're looking at replacing the roof for a few years. It's gonna be higher than forty-three thousand and seven dollars.
I hate this so much, I feel like I've got to go on the Bronx and hold that in the top of it. We really don't have it. In my opinion, I don't think we have a whole lot of options on replacing that roof.
This one there is the tar roof, it may have been damaged during hailstorm. What we had two or three years ago for insurance purposes.
Frank, when's the last time you inspected that? When you walked through and looked at the Hostess House?
This morning.
You did a full inspection this morning of
No, it's a commercial project, generally take places in a series of partial inspections, depending on what trade you, depends on cover of the other portion of it. I basically did a walk-through this morning, and there's some framing issues.
Would it behoove us to have Frank do a full inspection and give the council a bird's eye view of what his interpretation is? Because as Councilman Morse I just talked, I don't think this is him. I don't think, because of the value of engineering that, that Erin said, I don't think this is the last increase he'll be asking for. If we can get our, our professional that works for us to give us more, maybe we have fair tossage. Maybe we do both, get a couple of different sets of eyes on it. Maybe understand what's coming at us.
Before we do that, I'd like to suggest possibly cheering the side with me one day and then making that assessment afterwards.
Fine. And you know, what's, what's to say? We pull that roof off and we find all kinds of stuff up on that roof, I can guarantee that. It's gonna, we're gonna have another change order, talking about like this. I think we may find that out prior to that, if we can reach out and talk about that.
Well, I think they have a capital, you know, that exists. If you want in there, just, I'm assuming they're talking about the home roof remodel. They had that pulled back pretty hard right now.
Well, it's such a difficult project is the fact that we have an amalgamation of years of different remodels. The assessment's done on it and the level of construction, the materials we use all have to be taken into consideration because there are different states of either decay or dilapidation or just a need of replacement. It's, it's something I think you'd like to see with your own eyes.
They got two options essentially, is one, you pull, plug and let it down, which wastes about a million dollars. Two, we keep on going and it's a challenge.
That's about the line right there.
Yeah, no, Mr. Morse, I believe you're, you're true. I think, I think we're too far into it to drop. But I just kinda get Frank, like get a picture of what, what we can expect. Like, can you get to see the, uh, the base of the roof, or are they gonna have to replace? Afterwards, when they begin to start tearing stuff off and cheating and it could be, it could be a lot more than forty-three, that's what I'm afraid of. But maybe you could grill, not necessarily stop it, but prepare it.
The, the roof itself is exposed from the outside, it's open. So there were home-built trusses that are labeled with, uh, chip, like, basically. So that portion of it was assessed by the architectural firm. There should be third-party engineer or regarding the structural integrity with the building as well, because of other changes you want to do. The addition itself that was added to the elevator shaft, we should see a new addition, should be done. And the regular framing that's added is all industry standard at this point in time. You know, you're just, you're looking at a, a point in time when the church was originally built. People used the resources they had within the community. It was a point in time when there was a lot less trench building codes and they certainly had the oxygen load that in it back then that they will have now. And then you're gonna get ahead and also the HVAC, the plumbing, the other systems that really they didn't have access to back in the day. Where it wasn't again, the, the amount required by today's standards or where it goes. So you're kind of using a, a, a building, this, this really kind of repurposed from the original intention of it. It certainly wouldn't have been built like that, but it does have to be reinforced sufficiently with standards of live loads of people moving around and large parties of people and, you know, fire suppression since the top block, C A is required. There's a lot of moving parts in the So you just require there's a lot of moving parts in the day, so buildings are a lot more than they were when they were thought of.
I'm of the opinion that the best use of the facility moving forward, uh, the project, the community usage, uh, would be to re-roof the building. My biggest concern is how do we make it work? So that's always my biggest concern is how do we?
Right there, it says we're gonna make sure out of that old CIO fund, 65 from 2022, there's another one there.
That's, that's where the funds will have to come from. Originally, those funds were earmarked for a variety of projects, like which is the Hostess House. We have utilized the majority or will be utilizing, we haven't addicted to that fund yet, but we will be utilizing the majority of that fund that was intended would pay for the Hostess House, and it has done well over the last several years with interest rates on its interest income in that fund. So there are monies available there, but I currently that's the fund we have.
So the roof warranty, if we don't do this, it will only warranty five to six years.
For the new addition.
Within that five to six years, we should be able to figure out essentially right here, you know, a heavy rain or whatever.
Sure.
Right?
That's.
So I guess I can also see after that five to six years, highest probability to the best that risk is gonna be policy storm damage. Wouldn't that be an insurance money anyways? Because they're not gonna warranty storm damage. They have to go past that policy.
That's the reason I already backed this.
No, there's just. How would they, how would they know that though? Cause it's not a client.
I'm talking about it. You're talking about groups that they can't attach to.
Well, they consider that they should send it forward.
I've got a pre- insurance on it. Then the TML come out and forget it. And I didn't see decking, there's not a dis decking or anything. Looking at that Frank.
Yeah, you were, that was like.
I didn't, I didn't see the dis decking on the, the roof spot. They're just like, uh, they get into it, and they're awesome, you told that shit loud, I gotta replace it.
That's it, that is, on the new section, there's, there's decking, but on the old section, it's still existing because that was all left intact. So yeah, of course, you're gonna find something when you pull off, that's just an entry of being remodeled. But to the extent of it, I don't know. You know, it's gonna depend on what type of materials used to put back on the roof. I haven't talked to them about any of that, you know, I mean, if you're standing scene, if you go art panel, which I recommend not to, it's standing scene. So the addition is standing scene with the existing art panel? Yes. No, 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 no. Yes, and then it's standing scene is what, what it's gonna be replaced with, the areas still be up. Well, if you don't lose anything, I have a TML coming, right? To see various form damage, we can get some insurance money from it, maybe leave the place for. They don't house this firm especially, right?
No. TML does not always pay out as well, and we would hope that TML would, we just figured this out at City Hall.
So if we give 60%, it's 60%.
Well, something else I learned with City Hall going through is they're not willing to do any upgrades, they're only gonna play, do it as is. So whatever Hostess House roof looks like, it may not be able to provide adequate upgrade money for us. It might just be to repair what's there.
That's normal, that's normal, but it's repair money, since they're gonna pay to replace what's there.
But I was just making a comment because the way that they said material that is there on the South front, they may, they may not be beneficial. And the cost may not help us.
Well, if they're reimbursed for dollars, all the money we have, so. Just ask.
Let's see what kind of answer we can give you by our first February meeting.
Play one of the relax.
No way. All right. Seven point six, discussion and consideration of possible action, change order four. Structural changes, electric power study, upgrade structural and architectural changes, fire and park connection, she brought in on in the amount of $63,457 and 43 cents.
Mayor and Council, change orders, change order number four was submitted by ASC on November 7th and approved for consideration by the City of Land Passes on January 9th, 2025, by Reliance Architecture. It totaled $62,457 and 43 cents. And you can see the price breakdown there. Additionally, change order four recognizes substantial completion date of July 20th, 2025 for all work outside of electrical changes, which requests an October 31st, 2025 completion date. However, the contractor does believe that work will be done prior to that date. That's just a bit of a safety net that they're working into the change order due to complete time on electrical supplies, which you guys heard about at our last council meeting. If you want to root your attention, then this change order in conjunction with previous change orders that were submitted does use the entirety of the contingency funds that were planned for this project. So $105,000 contingency money was built into the 2.12 million dollar bid. And this does use all of that and exceeds that amount by $14,601 and 10 cents. If you go to, um, the next page, I do want to point out that there in that middle section where it says 2.332 million, that is incorrect. Someone within the firm has done that little section of the spreadsheet incorrectly, and we're in the process of getting that revised currently. I thought I had included it for packet, but I sent it back, so apologies for that. But that actually puts the new contract to completion at 2.227554. Barring any additional change orders, which we already know.
That's a good one. Before we get into it, I'd just like to take a moment to acknowledge that you walked into this, it's all frustration up here, things that you're having to report on this. Everyone agree with me on this?
Hundred percent, hundred percent.
Now the frustration comes out.
Aaron, you've been around a few days of reconstruction. What is your best guess? You know it's a guess, I'm not in order to have initial overruns. Do you think we can anticipate between now and October 31st of this year?
Based on what I've seen so far, going up to quarter payment today, um, an additional $30,000, and that's just on, it's on a fire department connection that has to be done for springboard system. And that's, do we complete that internally or do we have them do it? Because of, it's only the two, two options I got today, one is about $25,000 and the other is $101,000. And the $101 is if staff does nothing, and the 25 has staff picking up the rest of the fire department connection. We know that there's gonna have to be some electrical upgrades done for the range area to the tune of just shy of $6,000. That's coming down the pipeline. So I wish I had an expert number to give you if.
Did you make mention of the parking lot, how much of that?
Correct, the parking lot will have to be brought to ADA compliance. We do not have a cost on that yet, that was intended to be done in-house. And the sidewalks and railing were removed from the scope of the project, so there's some updates that need to be done externally there.
Easy to come up with a hundred thousand.
Easily a hundred thousand dollars additional expenditures, not necessarily through this contractor, but easily on, on top of what is intended to be completed in-house.
You say one of the frustrating things is, is that you expect that a lot to, a lot some of these nights.
But I do, I do think it, it is a passion project of the town, and there's nothing wrong with that. And I think there was a strong desire to, to see this done, and so we really wish to get it done and the way that we could, unfortunately, we cut things out through value engineering. There's some things that pop up later down the road that you just can't execute on the project.
It's interesting as well that we're voting on this change, but we're already happy.
Correct.
They're ready to work.
Correct. Um, it's a, a two and a half month delay from the change order was issued from the contractor's architect.
Why is it, why aren't we just gonna get two months?
Uh, there was, uh, the principal architect on the project had some family issues, and so we did not receive this, we did receive some feedback, so we knew it was coming down by one, but we didn't have it standoff to get approval on until two weeks.
I would, I would like to create a real quick rule that anytime we have a change order without engineering from, from up here. Just so that they have a little bit of higher blood pressure, we're looking at the assessment of that they didn't clearly catch. I know maybe it's not possible, but.
I don't know, I'm like that, huh? Well, sure, well, sure. I just recommend approving change order in the amount of $62,457 and 43 cents.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
City Council and City Land Passes will need and close executive session pursuant to the Texas Governor Code, Chapter 551, as follows. Section 551, point 074, personnel managers to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, or discipline of the public officer, employee, city manager, and other personnel managers allowed by the Texas Governor Code, Chapter 551. And if we get a motion to adjourn into executive session, settle it.
Mayor and Council, I'd like to request that Building Elliot and Tyra Marshall and Bart Baker be in executive session.
Thirty minutes.
No, no. Right, that's right. No worries, we're coming out of the executive session tonight. Need to get a motion to adjourn, so move. Thank you all in favor.